All right, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today we're found, we are words, we are joined by founder Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey.
Good to have you back. And we have Colin and Julie from our team here today as well. What's up, guys?
Hey, everybody.
Hey, hey. So this week, I'm really excited to chat with you guys about conversations. We are going to be riffing how we have conversations that get people started with Young Living. And another thing that I want to make sure that you guys are clear on, if you did not see the training we did last week with Janelle of Simple Grace Co., who signed up, what 70, 75, 70 something? New customers between October and December of this year, please make sure that you set some time out for yourself. The training is about 40 minutes. We did go a little long with a couple of people who had questions about getting started with Get Oiling on that video. But in the beginning, in the first 40 minutes, please, please watch this, maybe it's sort of the final thing that you do for your business this year in 2021, so that you are inspired and see just how simple this stuff is going into the new year. So maybe just let's have some fun with this for a second. You guys come over into the chat, of course, first let us know where you are coming in from. And then also let us know if you have one yet. Do you have a goal set for the new year? For 2022, do you have a resolution for your business? All right, we've got, hello, I know you've got you guys are all over the world. Vancouver, B.C., Oklahoma, Finland, U.K., Toronto, Texas. Hello, also New York, Italy, Italy, hello, Miami, Florida, Alaska, Kansas, Singapore, Oklahoma. Oh, this is such a fun party, you guys. It's always good to see you all here. If you've just celebrated the holidays, I hope you had a wonderful time with family. I hope you are warm and happy wherever you are in the world. And we are just so honored and excited to be with you, looking ahead into another year of growing your business, reaching your goals, changing the world, you guys, one drop at a time. With that, I do want to mention one thing real quick, and I want to actually share and show you guys. We do have, right now, as we're filming this on the 30th of December, 2021, we do have our promos live. These usually only happen Black Friday and and right around convention. We have extended this. It's available, guys, for less than a week more. If you want a chance to work with me one-on-one, to get VA services and design services done for you, to to get courses that we've created for you, to get free marketing credits for the life of your account that are bonus on top of what you already use to email and text your people. Guys, make sure whether you are an existing member of our community or you're considering getting started with us, that you go over to Get Oiling right now, our GetOiling.com. You can see all of these specials right here on the page. As of right now, this ends in less than a week, and you can see all of the things that you get here. Everything that you can possibly choose as a plan to get started with us has either a dollar for your very first month. And then, of course, if you use someone's referral link, that is a dollar for your first month and a half. Or you could go for an annual plan, which is just the, this is the best time of year to do this, you guys. Go for an annual plan, get all that out of the way, get those write-offs on your taxes. And and of course, get all of the great things that come with it. It comes with a 30-day money-back guarantee. So if you decide, you know what, maybe this isn't for me, after you, you made that plunge, we are not going to bug you, make you jump through 17 different hoops. If you aren't happy with us, which just, that's not really usually the case. But if for whatever reason you decide this isn't the move for you, we do have that money-back guarantee. All right, Brandy says he took advantage of the promo. So excited to utilize his platform. Yes, we are so excited to have you here. Of course, you're always welcome to join us on these live calls where we will train like we are today on something that's not even really tech-centric, that we will talk about the contact manager. And then, of course, lots of other in-depth trading, free resources to help you grow. And you could come on live and we can review your work together as we will be doing with, I believe, one person today. I think one person is signed up for our call today, which is super exciting. Niva, you're here. I saw your comments here. I'm very excited to chat with you. Okay, so today, yay, okay, good. So today, we're going to talk about conversations that get us new customers. So let me ask you guys a question since, well, we've got folks from all over the world here. So I do want to make sure that I've got a little bit of a caveat. Some of the things that I'll that I'll share with you today is very specific to or are very specific to the new changes, the website changes that are currently only rolled out in the U.S. I'm not going to focus on that, though, right? So last week, when Janelle was here, a lot of what she's talking about and getting new customers can often mean that you are starting a new customer and not even having them make a purchase that day. Because then the the system rollouts that they've had from corporate have changed so that you can just say, hey, why don't you just set up a free account today and we can figure out what you want another time? And that's you getting a customer, right? Because once they do that, it's just a matter of helping them place an order in the future. So if you are in the U.S. and you aren't taking advantage of this really cool thing that is in place now for you, please, please watch what Janelle shared last week and start just offering to sign people up with a free account, right? You can sign up for an Amazon account before you ever buy anything. You can do it with Young Living. So so with that out of the way, I want to talk with you guys about sort of the mindset around having more conversations. But I want to ask you some questions first because I don't want anybody sitting here or like half-scrolling Facebook while we're doing this. Let me know in the comments, how many people you had a conversation with this week? Who you would like to share Young Living with when they're ready? How many? Think back a little bit and then let me know in the chat. Four, zero, four, three, two, five, three, five. Okay, okay, handful, basically. Let me know in the chat now as well. In those conversations, were you talking about Young Living? Or were you just having conversations with someone you would like to share with? Tell me a little bit about what that looked like for you. So one of the things I want to talk about with you guys here today, let's hear we go, just having conversations, just chatting. Some folks are chatting about oils. One of those conversations turned to oils. Okay. And then, okay, I have one more question for you guys because I really do want to make sure that I'm talking with you who are here today, who took your time out of your day to be here today. Are you guys posting and maybe maybe just show me your hands here? Are you posting on social about oils specifically? Like, are you are you posting about oils? Or, you know, is this something different? Show me your hand if you're actually actively posting about oils. Is that part of it? Sophia says sometimes. Awesome. It looks like some of you guys are already having some really great conversations, talking about their sort of wellness goals and those kinds of things. Okay, great. Thank you for, yes, I love it. Just drips, just drips. Love the pun. A mix of life and oils. Thank you. I like this tattoo. This is, this is from our friend's restaurant out here in this little Norman Rockwell-looking village in the Catskills, near where we live. So super love them. Anyway, so this is fabulous, you guys. All right. So I don't want to get too heavy into what to post on social media today. It's not really what this is about. This is all about conversations. And the fact is, is that, you know, we as humans have mouths that move and two ears that listen. And, you know, majority of us, right? So 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 we are capable of having conversations, however you communicate, with just about anybody that we have in our orbit. Every relationship you have today can fall into one of basically three different categories. Somebody who could become a customer, I like to call it the three Cs, somebody who could could become a customer, right? Somebody who could be a client or a partner, someone who could work with you. So that would be like a brand partner. And then a connector is the final category. So somebody who may not become one of those first two, but that could certainly connect you to others who fall into those categories. The first two, grow your business, right? Customers, brand partners, that serves to grow your business. Connectors do too. So I think a really important thing that we need to get out of the way, if we're talking about about having these conversations that grow our business, is that we need to be detached. We need to be at peace with yes or no, or some other answer, right? So if you say, I think that my cousin or my neighbor or my friend that I'm chatting with in the DMs on Instagram right now or texting to or whatever WhatsApp, this person I'm communicating with right now, I see for them a future that has Young Living in it. And I think that would be so wonderful for them. We need to bowl that little idea up and go set it on a shelf because that is going to get in our way of an effective conversation, right? Does that make sense? If we have an idea of an outcome and it's not one that they have personally shared with us, we are putting a block in front of our conversation, right? This is where things get kind of weird and people feel like they're being pushed, right? So we have to be accepting of the idea that that not everybody is going to want this. A lot of people will eventually, but we need to let them make the decision. I like to think of sales and really of influence generally as 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 not you being Bob Ross with a with a paintbrush in your hand, but you're putting the paintbrush in your person's hand, right? And you're having a conversation with them and you're asking them where you'd like that happy little cloud to go. And you're letting them draw the picture of the future that they want. This is especially important if you are talking with somebody who might be interested in the business. It's especially important if you are a fire-red recruiter like like me. Okay, so I'm trying to try to come from an approach here today that's good for everybody. And number one, we really need to remember, no matter what your color is, that you are here to serve first. And what service looks like is what they need, not what you want, right? Everybody agree what agree on that so far? So some will, some won't. So what? I'm here to serve those who are ready. Okay. Now, how do we find out when people are ready? This is, I want you to imagine your relationship with the people that you are connected to currently. This could be literally anybody. This is a Facebook friend. This is an acquaintance. This is your mom. This is whoever that you might like to share Young Living with or whose life you might like to benefit generally, right? You know how on maps, there isn't like a set direction that you can go? You could literally, if you have a GPS, you could say, oh, I want to go there. But then if you take the wrong road, it'll reroute you, right, toward that direction? That is what your conversations should look like for you. If you're a visual person, that's the visual of what your conversations are. You have an ideal direction you'd like to steer this, but you're not the one at the wheel they are. Okay? So you need to be showing up and asking questions. This is really important. You need to be someone who listens 10 times more than they speak. That's number one. You need to be in service of others. There's obviously, there's, there's the obvious reason for this because that's a good person, right thing to do. But there is a strategic reason for this as well. When you let other people speak, what do they want to do when they're done talking? Everybody? They want to hear you. They want to listen. That's right. So you give an opportunity for them and then let them give the opportunity to you. You're always putting them in control. They're behind the wheel. They're holding the paintbrush. They're painting the vision of the future that they want. You're listening. You're asking questions that open up ideas that they could paint on their canvas, right? You're asking questions that can make them decide that it's time to turn right or left on the road, right? Imagine yourself that way. You are a guide, right? You are a guide and people who want to be guided will go with you. People who don't aren't ready. That's okay. You let them know that you're there for them in the future. Now let's get out of the sort of esoteric conversation here and get into something practical. So a couple of things real quick. Number one, if you're posting about oils already or you have maybe already shared Young Living with somebody, you can very simply go and say, and this is to those of you who are in the U.S. market right now. And for those of you, as soon as as these changes roll out in your market, go to the people that you have already shared this with before, who, you know, didn't have the time, dropped the ball with you. You dropped the ball with them, didn't have the money at the time, whatever it was, and go back and say, hey, I have a way to get you a free account. When do you have like five minutes this week? I want to set you up with a free account. And then that way I can get you access to all of the, you know, the great free, the information that I give my customers. I don't need you to buy anything today. This will allow you, put them into your member vault, right? You guys, if you have a member vault where you're teaching and sharing about Young Living, think about doing this instead of having a lead group for, you know, for for Young Living. If you are in the U.S. and you have a way to do that, right? If you can go and get them a free account, and all they have to do, you guys, is is just go hit, like, sign up on the Young Living website. Janelle showed it last week. So make sure that you're doing that for everybody that you've already shared with. Just say, hey, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to get you to spend any money today, but this thing just happened and it's really cool. I've got a way for you to just go ahead and get a get a an account. You don't have to order anything. We can deal with that later. But I want to make sure that you've got that so that you can get my discount, right? Okay, who's going to do that like today? Go reach out to the people who have not said yes yet, but you have shared Young Living with. Go to them and say, hey, I got a new thing. And you don't have to do anything, but just create an account. And I'm going to be able to give you all of this stuff for free and you're going to get my discount. All right, so that's really recommend that you guys go do that today. Now, yes, go do it. Okay, so so now let's get into sort of the roadmap of conversation here. Now, in all conversations that we're having, and you guys, if you haven't seen Jackie McLaughlin talk about this, make sure that you go back and watch our previous videos with her. I'll have to go back and figure out the which ones those were. But we also have, there's a training that we did as well that talked about using Get Oiling for her process. Jackie's a platinum with Young Living and has been doing this for almost 20 years. And and she is just an absolute expert on this kind of thing. So anyway, what we want to do in our conversations is first listen. Now, how can we listen in conversations and get someone talking? We have to first ask questions. So think about it this way. We'll use social media as the main deal here. So with social media, you, let's say, you know that there's somebody that you would like to connect with and see about sharing. And and so you're going to go and scroll through their profile, see what they're up to, right? Or maybe you've just met them. Scroll through their profiles, see what they're up to. There's a thing called the Ford method, F-O-R-D, like the car, right? And it stands for family, occupation, recreation, and dreams, right? And all that is, the Ford method, all that is, is a means by which in, you know, social prospecting, social selling, you can get to know someone a little better. These are points through which people open up in conversation. You ask them, you know, hey, I, you know, I see you've got kids, you know. Ask them a question about it, right? If you're also a mom and you see something in common, talk about it, right? If you see their kid plays soccer, you know, congratulate them on that championship that she that she talked about, right? On her post recently. Occupation, what do you do? Do you love it? What are your goals, right? What is, what are you moving toward? Recreation, what do you do for fun? Dreams and goals. What are you doing all this for, right? We all know how to have those conversations with people we love and care about, right? Think about a family member that you haven't seen in ages, maybe a niece or a cousin or something. And you just want to catch up on life. Think about the questions that you ask them, right? Just generally, if you're getting to know someone new, ask these questions. So you're going to Ford. Now Ford is one way to look at this. If you already have a deeper connection, a personal relationship with somebody, then you ask more questions. This is actually an opportunity for for you to ask questions about their health, for instance. Because if you're already close, they may be talking to you about this stuff already, right? So all you're doing with Ford is A, being a friend, right? Because that's what we need to be doing first. But B, we are opening up opportunities for us to see where we can serve, right? So we're looking for ways that we can serve them, right? Whether that is serving them by being a good friend, by, you know, by connecting them to something, even if it's not Young Living, that could be helpful to them if they have a problem. And then, of course, if Young Living does have something that could help them with their problem, we have a connection, right? So we're looking for those opportunities because we are here to serve. We are here to serve. Actually, Jackie, if you're here, please, would you in the chat, put that link to your Platinum Business Systems that we did with you during during the convention this year? I think if you guys want to check that out, it's totally free. You don't have to buy anything. She's not pitching you anything. And it talks about how she uses Get Oiling as well. And we'll make sure to put that below the in the description on the YouTube channel. So you're forwarding, right? You're forwarding until you have an opportunity. Now, once an opportunity arises, so let's just say, for instance, the person that you're talking with, you know, reveals that they're struggling with sleep, right? Or that they feel really anxious, they struggle with anxiety, or, you know, there's something that they are dealing with that they've opened up to you about. The number one thing you need to know is that you do not and should not pounce here because that is opportunistic, right? It's not truly in service of them, right? Unless it's a conversation you've been having with them over and over again, and you've already said, hey, I've got something that'll help you with that. Then you could be like, hey, like, we've talked about this before. Do you want to look at the thing I told you about before? That's fine if you're there with that person. But if you think there's an oil for that, pause, hit pause. This person just opened up to you and we need to be sensitive to the information that they're sharing with you and the confidence that you have built with them. If you spring into, hey, I could sell you something, what does that do to your trust? What does that do to your bond? It's not a good move, right? It feels a little weird. So don't do that. But but what you want to do is wait, right? Hit pause. Use your Get Oiling contact manager. If you haven't already at this point, been keeping up with the details and the conversations you're having, you know, the next time I want to, next time I reach out to Sue, I want to ask her about her dog and how her dog is doing because she was talking about how we got an injury and maybe how he's afraid of thunderstorms or something. And the next time I talk with her, I want to remember the dog's name and ask how the dog is doing, right? And and so I've got that in the contact manager. Now, next time I reach out to Sue, I'm like, hey, how have you been? Hope you had a great Christmas. How is, how's Rufus doing? You know, is his paw better? You know, I heard there were some storms that came through. How's he doing? You know, and then she, then we talk about it a little bit more. And if she happens to say, you know, I feel like I've tried everything and and the sky just can't calm down when there's thunderstorms, then, you know, you empathize, right? Like, oh, you know, I had a dog that was like that, or, you know, my kids get scared of them, or whatever that is. Be there for them as a human first. But then pause. Make sure you take your notes. Then go use this as an opportunity because you should pause. Don't jump on an opportunity to share right now. Put some notes in your contact manager, right? Then go consult your resources, your desk reference, your pocket reference, your apps, your books, your whatever. Young Living's own website. Find things that could be helpful to this person who shared this problem with you. Gather those things and 24 hours later, a bit later, right? Give some pause. Don't pounce, right? Come back and ask a question, right? This is a targeted question. And you let her know, I've been thinking about what you shared with me, right? I've been thinking about how you, you know, you were talking about how you just can't figure out how to get your dog to calm down in the thunderstorms, right? I found something that that my friend used that might help him out. Is that something you'd be opening to check, open to checking out, right? If I could show you a way to help him stay calm, is that something that you'd be interested in seeing? Does that make sense? We're asking, remember, we're always asking permission because she needs to make the decision to look at something. She doesn't need to have it thrown in her face. She doesn't need to be told to look at it. She needs to say, yeah, I want that. I want to see that. Could you show me? Could you tell me more? At every turn, we want them to say, I want to go that way. And we want that way to be the direction that you ultimately want them to go as well, right? So you stop after 24 hours and then you say, hey, I think I've got something that could help you with that thing we were talking about yesterday. Is that something you'd be interested in taking a look at, right? And when she says yes, then you say, great. Do you have 15 minutes right now? Do you have 20 minutes right now? Or do you want to, you know, schedule that for tomorrow or later this week, right? Making sense? And if it's right now, awesome. Now all you have to do is say, all right. So the main thing that I think would be really helpful for him is this one oil blend that we have. I'm actually a brand partner for a company that has these really great natural products that are safe for pets. And and there's this one that's really highly recommended in all of my reference guides. See, you don't have to be the expert here. So that would be the main thing, but there could be some other supporting things we should take a look at as well. So let's go take a look, right? Now you could get on Zoom. You could grab a sway. If you have sways, you could grab a presentation. You could sit down with them one-on-one, take a bottle with you. If you have it, however it is that you sit down with that person and share, you want to sit down and share. Now, in some cases, for those of you who feel really confident about this and are really just kind of churning through, you could do this with links via social. I'm old school. Really recommend conversations if you want to get customers that stick around, right? So you're going to share that information. Don't overload. Don't bombard. And then, once you've shared and you say, is this something that you could see yourself, or in this case, your dog benefiting from? Again, let them say yes. Ask questions whose answer is yes, right? Is this something that you could see helping? Yes. Is there anything else you would need to know before getting started? I can get you set up with an account today that'll get you my discount. There you go, right? You could, of course, another sharing tool that you could use is your built-in themes on the Get Oiling site. So this one would be the pets one. So if you make yourself a leg builder link of the pets theme, you could grab that, share that, walk her through it, talk her through it, tell her to, you know, watch the videos on the page so she can learn about seed to seal and all these other concepts. But that's, that's basically it. So let's kind of summarize it, you guys. It's really simple. Have great conversations. Be a good friend. Ford, right? Ford method, family, occupation, recreation, dreams and goals. Look for opportunities that arise that you could serve them with, right? So look for an opportunity to serve. When you have found an opportunity to serve, pause. Find resources so that you know what you could show if they said yes. And then go back the next day and say, hey, I've been thinking about what we were talking about. I think I have something that might help you. Would you be open to checking it out? They say, yes, you either show now or you present at a scheduled time in the future. And then finally, you ask questions after you have presented whose answer is yes. Was that awesome or was that awesome? That's pretty cool, right? Right? So things that are yes answers, then is this something that you could see helping you? Is this something you could see yourself doing, right? And then, if you want to, and I love using this, scale of one to 10. One being, this is totally not for me. They already said it that they could see themselves doing it. So that's not the answer. Scale of one to 10, one being absolutely not, and 10 being, let's do this right now. Where do you see yourself, right? They answer that. What if they're, you know, below a 10? If they're a 10, sign them up right now. Let's get you started, right? If they're below a 10, all right, well, tell me what would you need to know to take you from a whatever number they gave you to a 10? And then you sign them up, right? You give them the information that they need and then you get them started. If they can't do it today, schedule a time and then get them started. If you are in the U.S. and they can't do it today, set them up with a free account so that they are your customer when they're ready to make an order. All right? Makes sense? Awesome. All right. There's, there's just so much going on here in the chat. If you guys have questions, either for what I've just gone over here today or for anything else as it pertains to helping you with your website and the growth of your business, please make sure you've got those in the Q and A so that we don't miss them. Oh, great question, Kathy. Would you rather do this over the phone or Zoom? So my personal preference has historically been the phone. But like, back when I was doing this years ago, Zoom didn't exist. So Zoom is perfectly fine for this. I think Zoom, especially since the pandemic, Zoom has become become something that's more familiar to everyday people. Back when I was first getting started with this, it was the beginning of like Google Hangouts, for instance. Go-to-meeting, had webinars. But but Zoom wasn't really a thing yet. And even if it was, I didn't even know about it. And I was, you know, doing tech recruiting stuff online back then. So do the thing that you think is going to be most familiar and comfortable to your person. So if they, you know, if they're old school like me, get them on the phone. If they live down the street, go sit down with them. Phone is great for this, right? Like, if it were my grandmother, I'm not going to try to get her to install Zoom on her phone, like on her Kindle that she uses for everything. I'm going to call her and I'm going to walk her through it. I'll, I'll email her a link and we'll talk through what she sees on the screen. So I would really kind of base this on them because all of this is about them. It is 100% about them completely and totally and forever, all about them. If you make it about you and what you want, you know, you're scrambling for your volume at the end of the month or whatever. That's going to come through and you're communicating and people are going to feel that. And people remember how we make them feel more than anything else. And that's just, it's just a really important thing to remember. All right, Jackie says, I prefer Zoom because I can see them and they can see me. It's more personal, better connection, and you can tell if they're engaged or doing a million other things. Yes, Jackie encourages Zoom. You guys have Zoom with your Get Oiling. This is, I would go the way of what Jackie says, you guys. But but at the end of the day, if they don't have Zoom and it seems like a huge hurdle, there's nothing wrong with being on the phone with them and walking them through exactly what you do. That's literally what I used to do. So if if all else fails, telephones work, right? So you call them and say, I am sending you in the DMs a link. I'm calling you right now. Click the link that I just sent you. Do you see this on your page? Okay, great. Scroll down. Look at that video. Watch it. Pretty cool, right? Scroll down some more. Look at that video. Watch it. I'm literally talking about like the Get Oiling built-in theme. You could do that. And then walk them through that. Jackie also says, continue with questions and conversations after the sale. This is how you get repeat and residual income. Oh, my God. Yes, yes, yes. This is covered, you guys, in the Platinum Business Systems. And actually, if you want, Jackie, I know we didn't plan for this today. Be thrilled for you to come out and add any two cents that you'd like. Um, and actually, if you want, Jackie, I know we didn't plan for this today. Be thrilled for you to come out and add any two cents that you'd like to. Uh, Nozella, you ask, uh, by just setting up an account, how do they get our discount and free stuff? Is that wild freebies or ours? That's a good question. So when I say, uh, get freebies, uh, I'm talking about if you have a Good Oiling member area, for instance, uh, where you keep your, like, if you did the how to move your groups course, if you keep educational resources inside of a vault, uh, for your members, or even if you do this in a Facebook group, uh, where you serve your customers, your young living customers, um, where you share the content that you get from Real Workspace and that kind of thing. Um, so you're giving away the stuff that you have to educate them. Um, and then they would get your discount because it, as your customer, if they, you know, make that purchase and you could work with them so that they understand, you know, it needs to be this PV and that kind of thing or recurring, um, that, that they're able to get your discount. But if it's just a matter of like, they don't have time today, uh, but they could make an order in the future. Guys, if, if you're in the U S, do not leave a, a presentation without just setting up a free account for them. Do not leave a present, do not share Young Living with someone if you are in the U S right now, without getting them a free account with you on the same day. Cost them nothing, even if they're not ordering anything today. And you will be able to work with that person, you know, could continue with that person. They are now capable of being your customer. Nobody else is going to have that customer. They're yours. And you can help them from there. So the discount that they would get is the, they're now a, a Young Living member. They're now a Young Living customer. They can get the discount. And then whatever you give away to your customers for free, they can now get because they have crossed that Rubicon. They are now on the other side. Uh, they have a member number, uh, and, and a Young Living account. All right, that's in the Q and A. I gotta get back over here to the checks. I'm missing you guys here. Okay. Well, they get emails and all that by getting a free account. I think you do Young Living emails, uh, when you sign up. Um, I think you do, right? Yes, we got a yes here. This can be done in Canada as well. Thank you for clarifying that, Barbara. I did not know that. Um, perfect. So do this in Canada too, U S and Canada. Uh, when we offer a solution and ask, uh, if I have a, a sample for them to first try, then what? Uh, well, Carrie, that's going to kind of depend on what you have, right? Uh, and what it is that you, you know, where you are, if they're down the street, then sure, um, you know, it, I wouldn't. It just, it depends, right? So you could put, um, you know, a drop on a, on a cotton pad and, you know, put it in a bag and give it to them to smell. Great. That's a part of a presentation. That's fantastic. If it's a supplement, and I mean, they could, you know, buy a bottle for 40 bucks, like, no, no. If you're interested in this, you could try it out like everybody else does. I have a business and this is my business. So here, why don't you give this a shot, right? So, um, so yeah, with samples, I would, I, I would hold your ground, um, you know, on, on that front. Uh, and, and basically say, you know, look, I can get you an account for free again, U S and Canada. Um, and you could, you know, try out whatever you'd like to, if they're close by, you know, come over. Yeah, I'm happy to show you and give you a little taste of the stuff that I have here. Uh, but don't cut into your profit margins, right? You guys don't, don't go and create expenses for yourself that don't have a high likelihood of return. Once somebody is signed up and they're on, um, you know, they're on a subscription or something like that, send them books. Right? You know, send them happy mail, um, you know, do things that keep engaged, but you know, for somebody who hasn't said yes to like getting a free account. Like, no, I, I, I would say, why don't you just go ahead and do this? And then, you know, if you want to send them a little thing in the mail, you could, but that gets a little, um, it's, it's not too much to ask, like nothing, nothing that Young Living offers, especially for somebody who's interested in getting started, and especially with the new platform. There's really no reason for somebody to not just sign up and get a bottle of oil, right? Just get the thing that they're interested in. Um, and of course they can get your discount, which is great. Um, and I might be missing some of you guys' questions if you're not putting them in the Q and A. So please make sure that those are there. Um, so that we can, um, share this with you. Sophia says, at first I gave so many samples, even mailing them, return was zero. Yeah, right. Exactly. So, um, did, did you require someone to send you samples before you said yes? Probably not. Um, that's, uh, yeah. So go the way that worked for you. Um, and it, and it's okay, just you have, keep an abundance mentality. You have an unlimited number of people across this planet that you could share Young Living with, who are ready enough to look at a presentation if they can't sit down next to you and make a decision. And if they're not ready now, keep them in your contact manager. Just you stay in touch, be a friend. And if that piece of popcorn pops, great. Some of them don't ever pop and that's totally fine. We gotta be okay with that, right? So, um, you could say, you know, I, I don't do samples, uh, however you can sign up and get a bottle. And, uh, and if it's something that you love, you could say, you know, hey, you know what? If you don't love it, then, uh, you know, then you could send it to me. Maybe you want to do something like that. Um, I also, I also probably wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do that, but I'm, I'm, I'm really read you guys. Um, okay. Uh, Voice says, I've never set up a customer without an order. Did you cover this in a previous session? How is it done with Young Living? So, um, and just in case you came on the call a little late, um, or you didn't pick up, uh, what I was mentioning earlier. We had Janelle on last week. Uh, she is a Young Living leader who enrolled a ton of people, uh, over the last few months. And she is in the U S where there are the, the website changes here are live and that does afford you the opportunity to have someone sign up and create an account with Young Living where they don't have to purchase anything, right? So in the U S market, and I guess in Canada as well, um, buying a kit is not the only inroad, uh, to becoming a Young Living customer, right? So, um, or it's, it's not that it wasn't, but it's the best way, right? So, um, uh, before these website changes. So, um, if you're in the U S, all you have to do is, uh, is, is use your Young Living link and then they can sign up for an account. Uh, but you can go back and watch the video from last week. It's a really, really quick and simple thing you can do. Um, Jennifer asks, um, don't call yourself an amateur. Um, when they, uh, when they order through the free account, I gave them my link to, do I get a commission? I do qualify for commissions. I just haven't signed new people up since the website changed. So I am not super expert on, on how, you know, comp plan structure, Jackie, if you want to time in. Or anyone else who knows. Um, so that's your customer. Uh, when, when your customer places orders, uh, you earn commissions, right? Depending on how those orders are qualified and how the compensation plan works. That becomes someone who is in your team. They are a part of your organization. That is your customer. Now I know that, um, you know, there are sort of, you know, that 25%, I think Janelle mentioned last week. Definitely please add like, check out the video from last week for clarification on that. Um, Laura, yes, if you go to youtube.com forward slash Get Oiling, uh, it is the last video. It's the one that is, um, uh, Mama Four signed up 75 members in less than three months. Our 75 customers in less than three months. That's where you're going to get to see that. So yeah, if you sign them up and they don't buy anything right now, they're your customer. When they, when they buy in the future, they're your customer. Yes, the commission may be a little different. Uh, now versus, you know, if they don't order in their first, you know, 30 days, uh, but they're still your customer. And your goal in this is, is not to squeeze every drop of money that could possibly come out of this opportunity. That's not why you do this. Right? That's not why Gary did what he did. That's, that's not why this company exists. Uh, we're here to change the world one drop at a time, right? So we are here in a commitment with the people who say yes to help them. And sometimes people need a little longer, right? And that's okay. And we gotta be okay with that. If it's all about the money, there's a lot, I mean, you can go play the stock market. But this is, this is not just about the money. It's also about serving and helping to meet people where they are. Okay. So we've got that one. Um, Kathy says, I have customers who only order once or twice a year and they have lost their member number, password and PIN. Does someone have a system for dealing with this? Do you put their member number in their contact info? This is a good question. Um, Greg, I know we have a tree viewer. Um, are you able to, are you able to see when you pull? I haven't, I haven't noticed this because obviously I don't do this myself. Uh, but you know, can you see someone's member number in their contact details?
Yeah, it's in there. Uh, there's a contact number or yeah, member number field inside the contact. Um, so you can definitely keep track of it there. They should show up in your Young Living export too, even if they have an order today, like they should be in your organization. So, uh, if you export from Young Living and import it in, it will bring over the member number. So it should be in there.
Perfect, perfect. And yeah, of course, I mean, it's going to be in your VO as well. Um, so there's that. Okay. Awesome. Awesome. Um, you can see member number ID, um, but can't, yeah, you can't see their PIN. Um, Jackie says, it's there. You can go back months as well. It doesn't show up until you put your cursor over their contact info and it pops up. Um, yeah, so I can't really give, uh, advice on, on, uh, on the corporate side of things, uh, where that's concerned. But, uh, you could make it a habit though, when you are signing someone up. Uh, if you're there with them, and this again, is one of those reasons why it's so important to be with your person and don't just give them a link from your Instagram DMs and just, you know, they'll do it. Um, because they're going to need your help eventually and they need to be guided in best practices. You know, nothing that you could ever refer them to, Young Living included, is absolutely seamless and perfect in any way. If you refer them to Amazon, there would be bumps in the road too. And if you've used Amazon for a long time, you can say, hey, just a heads up, when you get started with Prime, do this and do that and do that. Um, you know, because when I started, I had an issue with X, Y, or Z, right? We all have those stories. We can be helping people get started better, right? Um, so be with them and then when they are getting started, tell them, hey, that, um, that email that you just got from Young Living, it has this number in it. I want you to, wherever you keep your passwords, uh, you know, in a notebook or something like that, I want you to write down your member number and the password you've chosen and your PIN. Tell them to do that when they sign up. Because yeah, this, this will happen. All right. Let me see. I asked for permission. Carrie says, okay, if I may have your password and PIN and case down the road, you need help, I can help you out too. I, yeah. That's a, that's a neat idea. Uh, if you download while insights on your mobile, it automatically brings up all your members with their number and details of order history. It's an official While mobile app. I had no idea. That's cool. Um, great. Like you guys are going off in the, in the chat here. Like I, I want to, I want to read all this stuff that you're saying. There's so much of it. All right. Uh, one more question here, and I would like to bring out our review today. Uh, Laura says, I keep mine in a note in my phone, but also in the virtual office, the member number is available, but not the PIN. That's right. So, um, so you are able to help them. If you do, I, I think that's a really nice idea, especially if it's someone close to you, you know, if I was signing up, uh, my mom or my grandma or something like that, I would say, hey, do you want to go ahead and give me this information so I can do things on your behalf? I wouldn't necessarily offer that to everybody, you know, if you just met somebody on Instagram, that might be a little weird. Uh, but, but yeah, if it's someone who's close to you and, you know, and you want to make yourself available that way, that's fine. It's not a scalable thing. I mean, you really do want to encourage people to take their own, take responsibility themselves to learn things. Um, but you know, in some cases it makes sense. Okay. So, uh, thank you for your patience. I hope that you guys found this helpful. Let me ask a quick question, actually before I move on. Um, I'm going to lower hands here. Who here feels like they would benefit from a visual representation of this sort of conversation flow? Uh, where we're prospecting, where we're looking at, at, at getting new members and having these conversations? Who here is sort of a, a visual learner who feels like they would really benefit from saying, okay, if I go here, I go here, but maybe I go here and then what do I do to get here, right? Curious if that's something that would be valuable to you guys? Cause I have a little something that's in the works. And I, okay, yes, ton, yes, like a flow chart. Yes, absolutely. Okay. A lot of visuals here. Yes, tons of yeses. Thank you guys for your feedback. Uh, we'll make sure that we have, uh, something like that for you, maybe in the form of a little mini course, uh, sometime after the first of the year. So fantastic. All right. So let me now please bring out Niva. I mean, I, I hope I'm not butchering your name pronunciation. Hello, welcome.
Hi there. Hi. So glad you're here. I'm, I'm glad to be here too. Um, my name's Neva, but I really don't mind, like everybody has trouble with my name. So that's fine.
Well, thank you. Thank you for correcting me. I think your, your name should be pronounced as you want to hear it. So I'm, I'm glad you're here today. Uh, so yeah, tell me about, uh, what you'd like feedback on.
Uh, so I'm a book editor and, um, I also host a book club. And, um, I, we, which is a self-care book club. And, um, a lot of what I do, um, I use oils to help me focus in my editing work. Um, basically it's part of my life and I want to make that show up more in my website. So, uh, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to, to look at my site. So I just want to get feedback to see if you think it's all over the place. Um, and I guess suggestions on how you think I could get it more focused using, um, what's already available on my basic plan in Get Oiling.
Uh, okay. This is wonderful. So number one, uh, self-care book club. How'd you come up with that? That is a really good idea.
Um, well, I have a group of, uh, new friends here in Rockaway. And I asked them, you know, um, do you, I miss having a book club. And I said, do you guys want to have a book club with a focus on self-care? Because I really am interested in everything self-care. And they all agreed. And now I have 23 members in the book club. Um, you know, and, and who are, some of them are already into oils, but not all of them. And that's them right there. That's part of them. Um, we're a growing group. And I just want to be more, I guess, uh, clearer and not all over the place, um, in my website to make it more, um, I guess focused, uh, on how it all comes together. Also with, with my use of oils and all of that.
Yeah. So, uh, number one, I'm really sad that I'm not in the city anymore because I would join your book club. I would absolutely have traveled the however long it takes on the A train to get out.
Yeah, that's true. It's a long, it's a good ferry ride, but it's a long subway ride.
It is a very, very long ride. Never again. Got a car after that. All right. Uh, and that's from Brooklyn, man, like not even in Manhattan.
Yeah, because there's no straight way, no straight line that comes here. I know. I, I hear you.
So here's, here's what I would say, um, would, uh, well, actually let me ask you a couple of questions first. Number one, who is, who is the person that you really want to be connecting with? I mean, is, is this someone who is busy that needs more self-care in their life?
Um, yeah, and somebody I guess who's like me who, uh, is, works from home or focused on work. And, um, you know, needs that extra help in focusing or inspiration in, you know, i- if they're in a creative field, ideally somebody also who is in, uh, uh, the same field or work at home. Because I found like really good hacks to, to help me focus using oils and all of that.
Okay, okay. Love it. All right. So this is, this is what I would recommend. Uh, at the, at the top of your page, oh, if I could go back here, where did it go? There we go. Um, at the top of your page, I would really recommend, uh, that you use like a really pretty image, uh, as a background with, with bold letters up top, speaking straight to them. I can help you create, you know, a, a more, you know, peaceful, uh, you know, homework life or however you would want to, to phrase that. Let's just get it right there above the fold, like, like on the, you know, front of a newspaper. When you see it in a bodega, you've got like the, the headline is right there, you know, folded on the front of the newspaper. So we want to have that right here, right? So that's going to be, I help this kind of person get this kind of benefit. Here's the thing I'm giving away, right? Or here is, here's how you can learn more or something to that effect. And so what I would do here, uh, is perhaps, and here I'm, I'm just gonna, um, that's, here we go. I'm going to create a pretend page here for you. Um, and put right up here at the top. Uh, we're going to put just a simple no, nothing here at the top. Just, you know, here's a column, no column here at the top. Uh, and then I want to add a background image and I'm going to do that from Canva. I'm going to use blog banner just because it's a nice big size. And so then when you open Canva, hey Greg, it's not doing that thing anymore that it was doing. All right, here we go. So I'm just going to use this, uh, this template here.
Okay.
And, uh, and I'm going to remove, oops, I'm going to remove this stuff because we're going to have text over it. Um, so I'm going to send that to Get Oiling.
Yeah, that's so convenient. I've done that before too, with images.
So I would do, I would do that and then have like that striking language there at the top. So I, I think that playing with language, uh, and, and our letters and, and images and things like this could do a lot for you. So just here in the center in heading, we could say, um, you deserve a better self-care routine. Join our book club and learn how you can, uh, I don't know, bring more peace into your day in just 15 minutes. A day, okay? Um, obviously you want to tweak this a bit to make it Um, obviously you want to tweak this a bit to make it a more, more you, but that's the idea. Let me make this, um, uh, twenty, okay? And since that is a darker background, I'm gonna make this white. Done, all right. Uh, and then we're gonna give it some space, oh, not that one, sorry, padding. Okay, uh, and then one more thing. Where is it? Okay. I'm gonna add a button and this is where you're gonna offer something. And this could maybe just be like a learn more. Okay. Right? So having something like this that just really draws them right in, uh, some, that kind of thing at the very, very top. Uh, is, is going to really create some impact there. It's gonna help people know whether or not scrolling further down the pages for them.
I see. Yeah, that's great. And, um, do you think, um, it's worth it to separate my editing, um, business? Um, to another site or like lead with the self-care stuff?
I think that the self-care stuff is going to be more conducive to, uh, to, to the oily stuff, right? So it kind of, it depends, right? So you really could have the homepage, the front page be all about you, uh, all about what you offer, uh, and, and, and not by all about you. It's all about them, but it's all, it's all about how you help them. So if, um, if, you know, being a writer and an editor and also someone who's super into self-care, um, maybe, you know, if, if your ideal person is an entrepreneur, like you, you've mentioned, they probably are, uh, you could say, I help, um, I help entrepreneurs and put this in a space like this. I help entrepreneurs, uh, create, uh, you know, s- simplify their life and create peace in their day, right? And, and so then as they scroll down the page, they can see, well, what are the different ways that you do that, right? So there's, um, on our YouTube channel, uh, relatively recently, we did a video that had a full walkthrough of a homepage with a template that you could use. Um, and, and that may be something, uh, that you might want to, let me see if I have homepage. I think this is it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a, oh goodness, that's loud. Okay, yeah. So this resource bundle, um, you could claim in your account and it'll actually give you a homepage template. And I've got Canva templates as well here.
Yeah.
Um, so here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this in your account, uh, since it's free and, and I'll show you what it looks like.
Oh.
Yeah. So you could have a picture of you here or you could have a picture, you know, that's about your, um, you know, one of the things that you offer. But then you can tell them more about how you help them.
Yeah. So I can activate this template in my, in my Get Oiling too. Um, because in the basic plan, um, there's, you have to choose like in the pre, preset templates, right? Like the, the basic templates that you have, and I feel like I can't change those, the, the basic template anymore. I can just add pages. So this one would actually change the base template?
So this, um, this is actually a template that's pre-made for you. So you could make any changes to it that you want to. So if you want to take this background color and change it from this brown, you can do that. Change the button color, swap the images. I mean, this, this is gonna work. So our editor works the same, uh, in basic and, and a- as it does in other, uh, in other plan levels, with the exception of being able to modify code, um, right? Uh, which in some cases you can still insert, uh, you know, using this guy right here, this, uh, embed code. So you can put embed codes here even at basic. Um, so, so yeah, you can, even on the existing page that you have, um, you could add a background like this to the one that you have currently. You can absolutely modify those pages.
That, that's really cool. Um, thanks for pointing me to that resource. Um, uh, my next question is about like the, the, the SEO for the links. Um, cause I noticed if, if I go to like work with me or something, that the link is like otherwordy.com slash page and then slash the, the section. Um, how do I modify it so that it's otherwordy.com/workwithme, for example?
Hmm, well, that actually is, um, that also works. So if we go to your page here, this is
Oh, that, yeah, that one.
Editor dash writer. So, um, we can actually go to your website here and go editor dash writer. And it'll still go to that same page.
I see. Okay. So it was, so the, the link that I'm seeing is just the page slash address is, um, that I'm seeing is something else or?
Uh, so, uh, Greg?
Sorry, Greg, I don't know. I'm, I'm not describing it really well. But, um, at, uh, when I look at the link to some of the sections, uh, some of the pages that I create, it doesn't, um, show, um, domain name slash the page, but it shows, uh, the domain name, otherwordy, otherwordy.com-page, like the word page and then slash the link. I mean, that, the name of the page. Am I making sense? Like, I don't, I feel like.
Maybe, well, here, let me reply. Let me know if it.
Yeah.
Um, so the system always puts that slash page in there because there are some other like reserved names. There's, there's some keywords, whatever, that are used by some of the built-in pages. So it always puts page there just to be sure that what you have will work. The vast majority, I mean, go ahead and delete the slash page out of there and just have your domain name slash and whatever your link path is. And then that will work. Uh, you do have to edit the links in the menu to make that work. Cause by default it does put the page in there, but if you're sharing it on social media, whatever, it does look nicer if it doesn't have the slash page.
Oh, so it works, it works without it. I see. And, and the search engines pick it up without the slash page, right?
Uh, it'll, they'll pick up whatever you have linked in the menu. So, uh, with slash page or without slash page will be whatever they see. Uh, it, it probably doesn't matter a whole lot for the search engines.
Okay.
You know, just, I don't know if that really makes much of a difference, but they'll pick up on the keywords that you put in the link itself.
I see.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah. That's all I wanted to know with that. Sorry, that kinda like was convoluted.
No, no, it's fine. I, I don't, I don't know the words for that either. You're good.
It's like, uh, playing charades or something.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, um, so big picture, I, I mean, I, I love everything that you've got here. I, I think that it would benefit from you just maybe speaking straight to the person and saying, hey, you just landed in the right place. Uh, and then, you know, if you're someone who wants to take action on this thing that is my focus, here's where you go and have that button up here at the top. And then you go into, well, here are some of the other ways, right? So if we do, so like just to look at this one real quick, uh, so, you know, hey, if this is who you are, I've got something for you. You can get it here if you're ready, if you want it. And if they're like, okay, well, maybe I want to learn more about it, we scroll down. Here's some more things that I do for you. Here are other things that I can do. Here are the ways that I can help you. So that this could be book club, um, editing, writing, this, this could be a, you know, consultation. You could have those things featured here and they could link off to your different pages. Um, you could offer, you know, another something here. Uh, you could have some testimonials here and then a little bit about you, right? So this would maybe be a little bit of what you have at the top of your page right now. Uh, and then just make sure that on your blog post, that you are, um, using the same size, the resolution of images.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, um, you know, and just title them the way that you want them.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, thank you so much. And oh, the last, last thing I wanted to ask is how do you put like the capture footer at the bottom of the, the website? If you, for the newsletter, so that it's not a pop-up?
Hmm. So the way that you would do that, so it's, it's going to be a pop-up unless you want to send them to a separate landing page. So we don't have an embeddable form at this point. Uh, it's definitely something that I, I think is on our radar, uh, but it's either going to be a click the button, pop it up. Or click the button and then go off to a landing page. And a landing page is, um, you do have access to those at basic. Uh, and, and that is something that you could, that, that is a form on a page. Uh, it's just sending them to a separate page.
Okay, that's, that's basically it. Thank you. Um, I'm, I, it's made it easier for me to create a site for sure. Um, to have Get Oiling and I appreciate that you have a mobile app now. It's really great. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming out and feel free to come back and let's see, uh, your progress as, as you're continuing with this.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, you guys. Thank you all for being here today. Uh, thank you, Neva, for coming out and sharing. Uh, I'm really excited to see where you go. I think a self-care book club is something that obviously you're holding there in person. It's a beautiful idea. Um, I think that's a really, really cool idea to even do virtually with your events on Get Oiling. You can manage your book clubs live using your Get Oiling Events Manager as well. Lots of really amazing things you can do and that just comes together so beautifully, uh, with the oils. So awesome, awesome. Um, all right. I'm gonna see if there are any more questions before we get going. Uh, and we will be back here next week, same time. I believe at that point we will be going into our push notifications, talking about the app, right? Um, fantastic. I think that's it. All right, great. Yeah, you guys make sure, uh, use our YouTube channel. Uh, go to youtube.com/getoiling. Uh, you can search once you're there, like I showed you, uh, that only works on desktop, but you could also type in Get Oiling and then whatever you're looking for. Get Oiling homepage, Get Oiling events, uh, Get Oiling, uh, new leads. Search those things, find those videos, scroll our channel. We've got these recordings from these live sessions there that we upload every single week. And if you are on our list at, uh, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession, uh, you get notifications of all of these when they go live. Uh, our app is called Attract Well, and speaking of Attract Well, we are live an hour from now at attractwell.com/. What is that? Office hours? Yes. Office hours, uh, where we're going to be getting into something a little bit more, a little more detailed. It's not Young Living specific. It is using the same software, uh, and similar strategies. If you have a business where you sell or want to sell high-ticket coaching or group coaching, uh, then you may want to go and check out that training we'll be doing, uh, at two o'clock Eastern time today. Uh, so you guys, we look forward to seeing you next week, uh, same time. I hope you have a fantastic new year and we'll see you on the other side. Pretty much. Here we go. Bye, guys. See you next year.